Oh hey. I've done, I've run down the list and taken a look around and whatnot. Uh, I think I've done every side quest, basically, except for the ones I tried to do that it wouldn't trigger for some reason. I think that in the case of the lady that wants me to do the Sokoban and some other stuff here, like this guy wants me to bribe him. As far as I can tell, you can only do stuff like that once per chapter, so I need to finish the current chapter and go on to the next one. So I've actually finished the story, the side quests up until now, except for weird ones that won't trigger. Like whatever was going on with uh... Oh wait, not quite, not quite, not quite. What time of day is it? Where am I? What time of day is it? Where did I save? Never mind. Uh, one minor thing, which is uh, oh shit, it's the wrong time of day, isn't it? This is uh... What time of day is it? Right, it's 6 o'clock at night. Okay, we're almost there. So I need to skip to tomorrow. And tomorrow's going to be the day where we finally, finally do the meeting that I put off for like a week now with these poor people. The one thing I will still do side quest wise though, is I need to meet George Woodman at work. I can't find him at the police station ever. So I'm gonna hang out in the police station and wait around for a few hour intervals at a time until I can find him at work. But right now, we need to drive home to the hotel and sleep. You're not gonna see that. You're gonna just see it be, you're just gonna see me be at the police station. Cause I'm so good to you people. I'm so good to you.
This makes it your sixth time. To thank you for being one of our best customers. Today, you get the special service.
Special service start.
Here we go. Bubbles. Washing cars is fun. Shiny. Looks pretty.
Um, I'm confused at what they're going for with that.
That was fun. Come again. I'll give you the special service every time from now on. See ya.
Zack, that was some aggressive car washing. She's crazy. Like a cat in heat. She may have liked it, but I never wanna go through that again.
That's the perfect response. Exactly, we're on the same page. I was like, what the fuck is happening? They were using, they were using the... I really wish that one of these waypoints, by the way, was my hotel I stay at. There's two waypoints now. One is the quest that I can't do until the right time of day. And one is that one gauntlet I played, seems to still be on the map forever, but not my hotel, which I have to manually look for on the map every time, cause I don't have this place down. But... First of all, her lines of dialogue were so like, she's like, "Ha ha, shiny, bubbles, washing cars is fun." I'm like, "Oh." This sounds like infantilization, which is like super not into that. Uh, and also that's the hospital shit. But like, she was also, they were using the car, I think it was the car, like it was the window washing sound, was being used for like a wiki wiki sound, where I was like, "What?" And she was so blared out by the headlight, that she was basically just a white shape. So it's like you couldn't even see what she looked like. I'm like, "This is weird." And it's, the game's still continuing to have its like, desaturated, like gray and brown look to everything, so nothing looks particularly enjoyable of anything really. And also, all of her dialogue had like this warped voice effect on it, like the monsters practically. So even that was like, "Uh, no." "No." "No." I do not know how to get to my hotel. I guess, I guess there's other sleep locations, just kind of all over the place, so I could just try to use one of those ones. I get so lost. You never realize how confusing this can get if, until they rotate the map. Who, who puts map rotation on the map you opened by pressing select? I've never seen that before. I never know where I am.
Jack the Raging Bull.
Turkey sandwich trading card. Of course. Payment details. Whoa. It's my pay slip. Oh my god, it's in so much detail. It's, "I'm stinky." Oh no. I have given up now. It did not work out. I'm gonna go to the community center, cause it's almost time for the meeting, and it's gonna actually happen this time. Hooray. It might be that George Woodman and Usha... What's Usha's rest of his name? Uh, they might be getting interfered with by the fact that this meeting happens for two hours in the afternoon. Maybe that messes with their schedule, and they never will let me do their quests or something. I don't know. I'm not really sure. But uh, I, Woodman never goes to work. George Woodman never shows up at work. Like, I don't know why. It's uh, it might be similar to what Emily is infamous for, cause I know that Emily is infamous for never showing up at, oh god. So full full transparency here. I'm recording this the day that it comes out, which is a little stressful, cause it's an editing intensive series compared to the other ones. Uh, cause I'm behind, cause of things getting messy. So I realized my timer wasn't on, so I reached over to turn my timer on, and so I could tell if I have an episode yet, and that I plowed off the road, cause it turned in that exact moment. That's a really good lesson in why you shouldn't text and drive. Thankfully, I learned it in a video game. I did not learn it in a video game. I've always, I've never done that. I'm not stupid. Don't be stupid, stupid. Is George here already? I can't tell, there's a billion names all stacked on each other over there. Hey Keith. Oh my god, Keith. Look at him. He's just standing there by his Cadillac, snapping his fingers. What are you? What are you? What are you? They can't even read the names, they're all overlapping. Gina, Jack. Oh, those are the gas station people. Do they drive here separately? Harry and Michael. Yeah, Thomas. Everyone's showing up for the meeting. Huh. Alright, yeah, there's Thomas. He's arrived. Apparently, it's an ongoing thing, and George might be similar. There's a thing where, I guess Emily, who has a bunch of quests, who was your cop coworker, is famous for never going home, and you can only do her quests at home. Not only can you only do requests at home, you can only do requests at home when it's raining? Which is, what the fuck? Why? Is it gonna...
Zack, Emily arranged for people to come between 1500 and 1700. We can't do anything here right now. Let's come back at the right time.
For a second, I thought I was gonna teleport forward in time to the correct time, and let me do it. But then that would have happened the first time I came here. I could talk to the weirdos. They're all showing up. What a colorful cast of characters. So I believe this is the furthest I've ever gotten. Is uh, when I played it with Andrew the most recent time, which was still like four years ago, I think. I did get to this meeting, which I mostly remember being this bizarre introduction to the colorful cast of characters, which I had no understanding of. I actually know them better now, cause I did a bunch of side quests, and I've met a bunch of them one by one. I don't really know them that well. Some of these, like these two are just caricatures, but I've at least seen them before. Before they show up in a bizarre town hall, where I'm like, "What's happening?" Oh, talk is not an option. Everyone's waiting. Let's go to the community center, Zack. Oh, waiting for time to pass. I actually can't talk to anybody. Well alrighty then, I guess we better pass time the old fashioned way. What, by smoking? I have an infinite ammo machine gun. What the fuck? What does anything mean anymore? There we go. I get, I still get mixed up by time converting 24 hour clock stuff more than I should. I totally was thinking, "Oh, 5 o'clock to 7 o'clock, that seems late for a community meeting." It's like, "Oh no, it's 3 to 5." You dummy. Now it's open, even though we're the only ones going towards it.
Greenville Community Center. Now that's an impressive building. Clock tower is impressive too.
You can spontaneously rain for the story, but you can't spontaneously rain when somebody wants to do a side quest with Emily? Just seems like a dick move, frankly. Oh, that little hitch.
Zack, I haven't been on stage like this since elementary school. I'm not some tree in the wind this time either. That was a tough role. I was a piece of scenery. Bright red tree.
Thank you, all for coming today. Getting right down to business. Agent Morgan, from the Federal Bureau of Investigations, wishes to speak with you.
Good afternoon. I'm Special Agent Francis York Morgan. Some of you are already aware by now of the tragic murder of Anna Graham. Truly a heinous, terrible crime. I've come to this town to solve the murder of this young, beautiful girl. And to bring the one responsible to justice. Unfortunately, incidents like these haven't tempted seeing too many happen again. I asked to have you gathered here so I can share some advice in order to minimize the risk of further fatal incidents. Firstly, please, stay away from any dark, dangerous, isolated places. Those of you with children, especially of Anna's age, please. Secondly, avoid going out when it is raining. Now I've heard the folklore story of the Raincoat Killer. There is a chance that the murderer is mimicking the story. Women should also be especially careful. I would hate to see more victims...
Who's the fashionably late one?
That's Carol, Thomas's sister. She owns a bar.
Excuse me. So, as I have said, avoid going outside when it is raining. Young women should be especially careful. Report anything or anyone suspicious immediately. The murderer will be caught and brought to justice. But you must all remain on guard until we do so. That's all I have to say. Thank you. When paying for our sins, we must not frown. The loss of Anna was for that debt. When purple fog covers our town, we'll all wander in hell, I fret. So says Mr. Stewart.
That couple would have gone better if you didn't have to pause for 10 seconds between the two lines.
Sure knows how to steal thunder.
Well then Zack, let's ask some questions before all these guys leave.
No one's freaking out about that? Freaking George and Emily look at me like, "Oh, what is he doing when I bring up the Raincoat Killer?" But no one's gonna be like freaked out about this asshole? That's like, we shouldn't, we shouldn't feel bad. We, the loss of Anna was us paying for our sins. It's like, she was meant to die, is what he's saying. It's like, what the fuck? Why isn't anyone yelling at him? Seems like somebody should be yelling at him about that line. Seems kinda messed up. I gotta say, this is shattering my preconceptions. I don't know how I got them, really. I think it's because the game is kind of known for this so bad it's good, low budget, campy mess, that I group it with like movies that are funny for being bad and stuff like that. And also my own memories of how it looks and feels to play, probably color it. But I completely forgot that like, it's just written as a funny game. Like, it's just actually funny. Which is really interesting, mainly because it's Japanese, which is not me saying that Japanese games aren't funny. It's that Japanese games localized to English. Oh no, those are real not good hit, that's a real miss for me. Like, there's been so few games. It's just, in particular, when I play a lot of JRPGs and stuff like that, you get to the obvious moment where that, "Oh, that was supposed to be funny." Okay. Okay, is more or less my reaction half the time. And the shining beacon for me lately has been the Yakuza series, that is so well localized. In fact, the localization team adds jokes and heavily, heavily customizes the game for the English audience. This game's also Japanese in origin, I believe. I'm pretty sure, I mean, Swary65 is Japanese at the very least. It might, the game might be western published, I'm not sure. Oops. Didn't mean to click on that. But uh, I'm, but like, York's just actually a funny character, and a number of the other characters and so on are just actually funny. Like these little asides of him. I'm thinking about, I was thinking about this during that cutscene, because of his little aside about his last memory of being on a stage, being being, performing as a tree in an elementary school play. And then he goes on about how it was a tough role. I'm like, "I..." "York, no, that's the wrong memory that normally have from that kinda thing."
Quite a performance. Mysterious and very poetic. But I don't think many of your audience appreciated it.
Mr. Francis York Morgan. The purple fog appears with rain. Soiling and ruining our town. The evil does not drain. Find out why the town is soiled. Remove the source from which it boiled. Then and only then, your case is solved. But for this to happen, to solve the crime, the proper must do the proper at the proper time. It is not yet mine, that is, Mr. Stewart's time, not mine. But if you, Mr. York, find the right timing to check with me, see, so says Mr. Stewart.
So, Harry. You know something. But there's some reason why you can't tell me yet. Is that what you're trying to say?
Cut the poetic rubbish, Harry, and tell us what you know. We can force you to talk, you know.
Mr. Francis York Morgan. Pay close attention to the signs. The omens and the premonitions. Small they may be, they still are finds. And helpful to your investigations. So says Mr. Stewart.
Thanks for the warning, Harry. But don't worry. Me and Zack, we know what we're doing.
Nope, he's gone. Goodbye. Did I accidentally skip? No, okay. I thought they teleported me out of being on the stage for a second there. I'm like, "Oh, can I still talk to them?" I just, I have questions. Cause this game's clearly done on like a micro budget. It's an Xbox 360 game originally, that looks like a PS2 game. At best? Like, these graphics are I was gonna say comparable to, but they're probably worse than Final Fantasy X. And Final Fantasy X10 came out like the year 2000, and this game came out in like 2008 or 10 or something, like a decade later? On a hard, on more powerful hardware. So it's clearly a micro budget game. It cost $20, it was $20 new, even though it was a disc game, which is extra bizarre. So why is the localization good? That's the last thing you'd expect, right? That to have jokes that carry over into the English audience version? Unless I'm just wrong, was it just never written in Japanese? Just seems like it would have been written in Japanese first, then translated to English. Mainly, I'm mostly attaching myself to the origin point with Swary and everything. What if it was always in English? I don't know. Even then, there's like localization going on on some level, if you have to translate the things. I'm just curious, was it, was it a good localization? Or is it just a game that focuses on a kind of humor that translates better? Cause a lot of Japanese games have a heavy emphasis on like puns and wordplay, which are untranslatable. Cause you're translating it to a different language, where those words and, those puns and wordplay are incompatible. Which means you either have to have characters say something nonsensical that makes no sense, like in Zero Escape, every joke. Or replace the entire joke wholesale with a completely different joke, like the Yakuza people do, cause they're masters. Okay, stop. Wait, are you? Is this on rails? Whoa.
Anna was an airhead.
What do you mean? Are you saying she was killed because she was an airhead? Or are you saying that she was an airhead for being killed?
I'm sure she's still an airhead, even in heaven. She changed her hair every day. If she lost a pound, she'd be ecstatic. Gain one, and she'd almost be in tears. She broke many, many plates every day at the diner, and she'd always have a smile on her face. Always having fun. Everyone looked at her and knew she was a cute, adorable, loving airhead. But they would be smiling right along with her. I wouldn't be surprised if the angels smiled with her too.
Isaac and Isaiah said that Anna was a fairy of the forest. A goddess.
Hello there, Agent Honor Pickup, sitting there on the cutscene. Those are always funny. Ooh, heavy cigarettes. Get them. I don't know. I like the, I like the image of everybody, just like she's smiling and breaking things and giggling, and everyone's just smiling back, and inside their heads, they're just like, "This stupid motherfucker." And they just can't help but smile. But also, he's the, she's just the dumbest. This is weird. I've never encountered this kinda mechanic before, really. It's like it's an on rails, walkabout randomly and talk to people scene. Where if you just take too long to do something, the game will find someone for you that you haven't talked to yet, and teleport you to them. That's interesting, I guess. I don't know if it's good or bad, honestly. It's probably good. It only really affects, negatively affects people like me that are gonna stand on stage and talk at their audience for a bit, whereas a player having trouble finding someone would probably be happy to be teleported to the next person when they take too long, since there's nothing else to do here, and you don't wanna miss the people.
Agent York, your words really made me think about Anna's death again. How could one do such a terrible thing? I'm still in shock.
Thomas, I forgot to ask. You don't have a tattoo on your back, do you?
A tattoo? I do, actually. But why?
Could you show it to me, please?
What? Now? Here?
Yes, please. This is vital for our investigation.
There's a door right behind you. We don't have to...
Okay, if it's gonna help you any.
Is it gonna be adorable?
Well, I'm wondering who G is now, but aside from that, did it tell you anything? It told me that you didn't kill Anna.
Of course not. What are you saying?
You ought to see that tattoo, Zack. A big heart with an arrow through it, and "Love G" in the center. I don't know when he got that done, but we've all been through the 80s.
I was never through the 80s.
Agent Morgan, here's your chance to get to know some of the townsfolk. Don't let it go to waste.
Jump down, huh. I don't need stairs, I'm Agent York, FBI. What's this thing do? Oh, coffee. I thought it was an interaction scene. It's like, what's that gonna trigger? Am I gonna shout out at everybody again?
Agent York, are you finished asking questions yet? When you're done, let me know. We'll all get dinner.
Aw, that sounds pleasant. Let's all get dinner, gang. Who are you, sir? Suspect.
Good evening, Agent.
Oh, he's the suspect. Oh my god.
Good evening, Mr.?
Brian. The Gravekeeper. Brian.
Mr. Brian? I like the retro look. Auditioning for Little Grave on the Prairie?
Anna. Oh, she was so beautiful. Too soon. Too, too soon to go to the grave. So sad, so sad.
I totally agree. That's why I'm here. Looking for the one who did it. Were you close to her?
Anna. Her smile, so warm. Anna, blonde hair, so bright.
There's a graveyard somewhere in town, Zack. I'm not excited about the idea, but maybe we should at least check it out.
Evidently, he didn't exactly even slightly bring himself away from being a suspect. What in the world?
Quint, you're here too. I didn't think you were the town meeting kind of guy.
A friend of mine was killed, you know, man? I'm not letting this one go quietly. I'll do anything to help you catch the scumbag who did this.
Thank you. But vigilance is not justice. Nothing good will come from desiring simple revenge.
Oh come on, I'm not that stupid. But I'm frustrated a bit, just thinking that there's nothing I can do about it.
We each have a role, purpose in life, raison d'être. Don't forget that.
I know, I know. Just don't preach to me. You're sounding like my old man.
Zack, wow. I'm in shock like a weasel in an electric chair. He just made me realize that I must be getting old.
I'm in shock like a weasel in an electric chair. That sentence should make you feel like you're getting old. I like how Richard politely just turned around like he wasn't in the conversation.
So finding your way around, okay?
Yes, pretty much. But some people are hard to get along with.
People problems, huh? I thought city folks were used to things like that. There's lots more people in the city than there are here.
Well, that's true. But I started simplifying things a bit. Here's my new way of thinking. It's simple, really. There's only three types of people. Criminals, victims and investigators. Everyone else are just vegetables. Vegetables called other people.
You really are strange.
Why can't I get along with all these people? I just have completely minimized them and dehumanized them until they're literally objectified into being vegetables. Seems like everyone should like me. I'm Francis Jorgen. Francis Jorgen. Francis Jorgen. That's not what I was going for. Suspect, is that? Should go to bed soon? No, we're working. Uh, hello Metal Gear Solid 3 Extra?
So you're the FBI agent, are ya?
He's literally called the general?
I'm FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan.
I'm the general. I fought for my country in the Vietnam War.
A real life war hero. So why are you living here?
Soldier, this is my hometown. After a man returns from war, there's no place to go other than his hometown. Your little speech, you mentioned the Raincoat Killer.
Was that a problem?
You imbecile. The Raincoat Killer's no myth, not mere folklore, not a fairy tale. It's based on actual events that happened in this town.
It is. I'm interested. Can you tell me more about this?
You kids today don't even know how to ask for something right. Soldier, if you want to hear more, you come to my office.
He literally exudes raw power, Zack. Despite the credibility issues, we should give him a visit. One thing though. Calls himself a general, but isn't that a sergeant's uniform?
Oh shit. And I was gonna say, don't generals have names too? You know, nobody is just like, I am the general and that's my whole name. Like you do rank, you do rank the name. That's how, that's how this shit works, bro. Uh, odd interaction. Also, kids these, kids these days, he really, he did a literal kids these days moment about how rude and shitty kids are and but like we were just politely asking a question and he was like, fuck off, come to my office if you want answers, questions answered about the important investigation I came here for. Everyone's here for the investigation. You idiot.